This conference will now be recorded.
Is generally south of the text with site on this map here. So generally, the southern half of the property. You can see here, so generally, the southern half of the property is subject to this plan amendment and zone change. The Metro Plan currently identifies the site as being designated for a mixture of commercial and medium-density residential designation. It also is identified as a nodal development area. And I have an extract from the Metro Plan here with the site indicated. The applicant is proposing to redesignate much of the southern half of the property, about 36 acres, to medium-density residential and retain about little over nine acres of the commercial designation. Currently, as depicted on the applicant's diagram, the nodal development area kind of wraps around what was identified as a former commercial site in previous development plans. By way of short historical summary of the site, in 2007, land use plans were advanced for this property to cite a home improvement center and retail village on the southern half approximately of this property, the northern part being residential. Obviously, that did not come to fruition. There hasn't been any development on the site in the past 12 to 13 years. And so the applicant is now proposing to change the designation and zoning in order to accommodate different uses, including institutional uses for school and church. There has been some initial development in the upper northeast corner with the initial subdivision phase of 29 lots identified as Markola Meadows Phase 1A. And so that's currently under construction. So the fact that there's activity on the site has generated a fair amount of community and neighborhood interest in the property now that things are actually occurring on the site. As you can see, the nodal development area kind of wrapped around the site that used to be identified for a home improvement center. So it does not comprise the entire 100-acre neighborhood. It's about 81 acres. The applicant is proposing to redesignate the bulk of the property to medium-density residential to retain a commercial designation along the southwest corner and one roughly one-acre piece just west of 28th Street along Markola Road, as depicted on this diagram. So when it comes to the zoning for the site, the northern half approximately is medium-density residential zoning and the southern 45 acres, just under one half, is mixed-use commercial. The applicant is proposing to change the zoning in the southern half of the property from mixed-use commercial to a combination of medium-density residential, community commercial, and public land and open space. The intent being to locate a church on the community commercial portion of the site at the southwest corner of the property, a public school in the public land and open space portioned immediately to the east, and some form of commercial, whether it be a neighborhood convenience store or something of that nature on the commercial site on Markola Road. Currently, the property has a development master plan that expires in 2023. The original vision for the neighborhood was a single-detached dwelling configuration in the northern half approximately with a combination of single-detached dwellings and townhouse-style homes. The southern one-half was a retail village and higher-density residential housing within a mixed-use commercial zone. To facilitate the applicant's master plan vision for the neighborhood, the zoning is necessary in order to achieve a proposed master plan, which includes the church and school, as noted here, a commercial site on Markola Road, and then multi-unit residential development in the southeast corner of the property proximate to the intersection of 28th Street and Markola Road and also near Pierce Parkway, just basically east of the, or sorry, west of the Armory. So that comprises staff's summary of this application. The redesignation is required in order to affect the zoning sought by the applicant. The underlying designation of commercial does not accommodate the types of uses that is being proposed for multi-unit residential. So the commercial component being retained is about nine acres, which would be for the church and the commercial site of Markola Road. The remainder would be a medium-density residential designation. Schools are allowable use in medium-density residential designation. And so the overlying zoning would be public land and open space, which is consistent with other school sites within Springfield. And finally, the nodal development overlay, which is identified in the Metro Plan and also through the zoning, is proposed to be removed in its entirety by the applicant. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them. And I know that the applicant will be making their own presentation on this matter in case you have any other specific technical questions.
Troy?
Yeah, Tim. Go ahead.
Okay, I have an item to bring up. Now, you've noted that construction has already started on part of the site as part of Phase 1. Now, we learned in an earlier conversation with staff that the applicant was intending to fast-track this project. Now, I don't know what that infers as far as a timeline, but I'm sure we're all aware, and you are as well, that one of the issues that we're looking at currently is Mark Russ working on a development code update project. And so I'm visualizing that this project is possibly going to span two different sets of code language. And so I could visualize possibly that after the new code language is in place and the applicant analyzes what that new language contains, that after looking at these zoning changes and the specific acreage involved, that possibly the applicant may be back with another set of revisions to reflect the language in the new code. So I'm noting as well on your figure that the lots have already been laid out in the residential area. So the question I have is how has staff addressed this particular issue with the applicant in regard to having two possible sets of code language during the time period that this project is underway?
Well, one of the ways that they can do that is through modifications to the master plan. And the applicant, staff anticipates that the applicant will be coming forward with modifications to the currently approved master plan to accommodate the changes in zoning that are being proposed should they go through. The next step would be to modify the master plan consistent with the new zoning fabric for the property. And that essentially locks in the point in time land use entitlements for the developer. So as the master plan development continues to play out, the code provisions that were in effect at the time of that master plan approval would be the ones that would prevail through build-out. Should they choose to change that or submit a new master plan, an entirely new master plan, then potentially new code provisions might apply. The only thing that might overlap would be site-specific development. If there's a site, like a property, that's created for, say, multi-unit residential and it sits for a period of time and not undeveloped, and the new code is adopted and someone comes in, a third-party developer, to build on the site, then they would be likely subject to the development code provisions at the time that their project is kicked off or is initiated. But much of this site can build out under the current code provisions, and it would not be subject to a changing development code per se. It would be sort of a, it would lock in the current code provisions for this property.
So in other words, I notice all the lots have already been laid out. That lot configuration reflects the current code and not anticipating what might take place in the future?
Correct. There is provisions in the current development code to have lots that are smaller than the standards established by the development code for minimum lot sizes and dimensions. If it's done in conjunction with a master plan and with a zoning of medium-density residential, smaller than essentially a small-lot residential type of development can be created. And that's what's been proposed and approved here in the currently approved master plan. If I can go backwards. This lot pattern in Phase 1A, which is in the northeast corner of the property, is consistent with the current code provisions allowing for reduced lot sizes in order to achieve overall density that meets the current code provisions.
I do want to be clear that the-
Thank you very much.
Real quick, I want to just be clear that the slide you were just on, Andy, the previous one, that is what the developer proposes. And there are only a portion of those that have preliminary, a portion of that lotting pattern that has preliminary plat approval. And it is contingent upon the Planning Commission at a later time approving that master plan modification that Andy was talking about. So it's not correct to say that that lotting pattern has already been approved under a master plan. It has not. There's tentative subdivision approval for a portion of what you saw on the other screen, but not for all of it. And I also just want to clarify for the record that the development code only applies to the current application in that it sets the criteria of approval for plan amendments and zone changes. So there is no, which are, which implement the Metro Plan and our comprehensive plan policies. So there's no changing standards that would impact the ability to change the zoning or Metro Plan status of the properties.
Thank you.
There will be another opportunity after testimony from the applicant to ask questions for the applicant and for staff. But if any other commissioners have a question right now that they'd like to ask staff?
I have a couple of questions. This is Commissioner Coivilla. I'm not sure if the, if staff or the applicant is the best person to ask these questions to. They're kind of technical. One would be if there is, if the changes as proposed are approved, what would be the subsequent change in number of residences? So for instance, if a townhouse was changed to a single-family residential lot, what would the overall capacity of the property be changed for number of housing units on the property? And then the second question, which again, I'm not sure who the best person to ask is, would with the removal of some of the mixed-use commercial and the school site and the church site from the tax base, what would be the subsequent diminishment in property taxes for the overall property at final build-out?
So real quick, changes in the tax base are not related to criteria of approval, and we cannot at all make decisions, especially around religious uses, based on or due to the fact that it would be tax-exempt. So I'm going to advise staff actually not to answer that question or even try to answer that question because it's not relevant to the criteria of approval and could infringe on some constitutional issues with regard to religious uses.
Sure. And I guess in any event, the Lane County Assessor's Office is in charge of that. So regarding the first question, Commissioner Coivilla, the, and I'm trying to recall the specific number, between the master plan you see on the screen here, and I'm going to advance to the next one if I can, the proposed master plan, I believe it is a net increase of approximately 250 units, depending upon the type of multi-unit residential that is constructed on the newly-created residential area in the southeast quadrant of the property. So notwithstanding school and church, it actually would result in a net increase in residential units on the property at the trade-off of commercial.
Thank you.
This is Sophie McGinley. I have four questions, and I can ask them one at a time if that's the easiest. The first one is that now, more than ever, we are thinking about community resiliency and a path to economic recovery. We're facing a dark economic downturn. Finding 66 cites a collapse in the market as a reason for this rezoning. This reactionary sentiment responds to current conditions understandably for a situation with no definitive timeline. But simply put, for every downturn, there is an eventual upturn. Small businesses in the upturn may seek smaller mixed-use sites in town. And I'm wondering how the reduction in mixed-use zoneland supports economic recovery and opportunity?
To put it out there, if you would like your question answered by the applicant, I think that we can have them respond during or after their testimony, if that works for you, Commissioner McGinley?
Yes, I have a couple of questions that are directly related to other findings and wordings. And so I think I will ask those now since Andy can answer them.
Sure, okay.
Great. So my second question is, finding 66 states that there is no direct access to Highway 126. The southeast terminus of the site is 800 feet from Highway 126 directly along 28th Street. Can you explain what you meant by, quote, "no direct access to Highway 126"?
There's no interchange at 28th Street and Highway 126, it goes underneath Highway 126. So it's sort of midway between the Mohawk/19th Street interchange and the 42nd Street interchange. So it's reliant on the east-west link of Markola Road for access to the highway interchanges. Or I guess you could go south of 126 along Olympic to get to 19th and, slash, Mohawk and 42nd Street. So, but it is not served by a interchange.
Thank you for that clarification. This one is pretty related to that. Finding 71 states that, quote, "the Markola Meadows site is served by existing transit stops and is in close proximity to employment center, shopping, and a wide variety of services." What is the difference in meaning, in your meaning using, quote, "no direct access" in finding 66 to justify Highway 126 being indirectly accessible from the site, but, quote, "close proximity" in finding 71 to justify residence access to commercial services along 126?
I guess the services that I was referring to were the ones in the commercial node, which is just immediately west of the site and abutting the site. I'd call it the Albertson's Shopping Center, where there's a pharmacy. There's some medical clinics also that abut this property. And so that was the commercial shops and services that were being referenced in that particular finding. There is also, as we know, a commercial south of 126 along Olympic. So heading south on 28th Street would reach Walmart as an example. So that is also proximate to this site.
Great. Thank you for the clarification. And Andy, thank you for your extensive and comprehensive staff report.
Thank you. It was a team effort.
Okay. As mentioned before, we'll have more opportunities for questions as they come for staff and the applicant. But are there any other commissioners that want to ask staff questions right now? Okay, hearing none, we'll now have a presentation from the applicant.
I think we'll need to have AKS Engineering made a presenter, Brenda.
Sorry to interrupt. AKS Engineering, I can't hear anything if you're talking.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, fantastic. All right. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you Chair Sherwood, members of the Planning Commission. My name's Chris Goodell. I'm a land use planner with AKS. Our address is 12965 Southwest Herman Road, Suite 112 in Oregon 97062. We're working for the property owner and prepared the application that's before you tonight. The applications are pretty technical in nature, and Andy did a thorough job of describing them as well as providing some permitting history of the property because there's quite a bit of that as well. As Andy mentioned, there's a, construction has just started on a small part of the project located in the northeast corner of the property, which is part of a single-detached residential neighborhood that the subdivision was approved last winter. And this is the first phase of that portion of the subdivision. So why don't you click it to the next slide there? So this is similar to the slide that Andy showed, and it's more or less it's the property owner's goal for the property is to put together a community and neighborhood that looks like this. It's going to have a number of components. We're calling them phases. So the first I'd mentioned is the Northwood Christian Church, which is in the southwestern portion of the property. It's a pink color, and that's about eight acres. There's a new public elementary school from the Springfield School District plan in the southern portion of the site, which is shown with a lavender color. That's about 16 acres. There's a multifamily residential portion, which is colored tan in the southeastern portion of the property. That's little over 12 acres of the property. A small neighborhood commercial site on Markola Road. And it's envisioned as being, you know, a small convenience market, coffee shop, that kind of thing. And then the bulk of the northern portion of the property is a single-family, or excuse me, a single-detached residential neighborhood. And that's about 449 dwelling units, I believe, total. And the rest of the property is occupied by, you have the Pierce Ditch, new roads, which are sidewalks and pedestrian connections, which the roads themselves, there's a neighborhood collector street and a bunch of local streets that are envisioned as serving this site. Those are colored, the roads are shown with the orange arrows, and the pedestrian connections are shown with yellow. So for the bulk of the southern portion of the site, each one of those properties is subject to this application. It's also, as Andy mentioned, a part of a master plan modification or master plan update that we're working on, and it will be hopefully before the Planning Commission soon. Each one of these phases, as I know, our work is underway on each one of them. So the property's set vacant for a long time. This property owner is making improvements, and each one of these phases is actively being planned and is moving forward. So you're going to see something happen on the property here soon. So, but really, tonight is sort of the first step in that process. And before we can get the master plan modification or updates to the multifamily site or any of the other things that are kind of shown here, we need, we're looking for your recommendation of approval here tonight to the City Council for the plan map amendment and the zone change applications. I'm here with other members of the project team, and I know the owners are in attendance as well and would be happy to answer any questions that we can. Thank you.
Let me give it to Chair.
Yeah, Troy.
Just before that, Tim, Commissioner McGinley already asked a question that I believe she was hoping to have answered by the applicant. So I wanted to give her the opportunity first.
Thank you, Troy. I'll just repeat the last sentence of that. I was wondering how a reduction in mixed-use zoneland supports economic recovery and opportunity?
Well, I think the mixed-use zoning's been in place there for some time, and it really hasn't worked. The site hasn't had any interest or development, and this project here has, well, it will be moving forward. It is moving forward. So it has the, you know, the church and the school and the multifamily. We're working on all those things. So those will support the surrounding community and are going to be good for the community in terms of economy and the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Okay, Tim?
Thank you. In light of the number of housing units that you're proposing on the overall project, which I imagine is probably about the largest project that the city of Springfield has ever seen, and is no doubt going to have a tremendous impact on the housing market and the availability of housing. And I don't know if you're aware or not, but the city of Springfield has, in the last couple of years, placed a focus and emphasis on the creation of affordable housing. So I realize that no one has certainty about economic conditions during the span of time that this project is underway. But could you give us a ballpark idea about what percentage of the housing that you're planning to create would fall into the category of affordable housing?
I don't have a specific number or anything like that. With basically, you know, the law of supply and demand, when you see more supply, it will in turn reduce the costs of housing in general in the area. So if it's, you know, we have a tight supply right now and limited availabilities, that drives the costs up. In this case, as you, like you said, there's going to be a lot, a lot more homes, opportunities. These would be smaller lots in general. And so they'll be, it will be more affordable than surrounding bigger lots and bigger homes, and it will, it will impact the, I guess, the cost of the surround, of the, basically, a house in Springfield in general. If there's more supply, then the price should go down. I'm not an economics professor or anything, but-
So it will depend on market conditions, is what it is, is what you're saying?
Well, that's part of it too. Sure. We're, right now, we're experiencing a very good housing market, and hopefully that continues.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
There will be another opportunity for questions for the applicant from the commissioners after applicant rebuttal. But I do want to give an opportunity while we still have the applicant up right now if commissioners have any questions.
I have one fairly simple question. Commissioner Coivilla, again, the detail of the drawing is not, not ideal. And I was just wondering if the Pierce Ditch appears to stay in place. Is that, is that generally the concept for drainage across the middle of the property?
Sorry to interrupt again. I believe you may be muted again, unless it's just glitch on my end?
No, the glitch was on our end. Sorry.
No problem. No problem.
So, again, the question on the Pierce Ditch, the idea is to minimize encroachments, impacts to the Pierce Ditch drainage to the maximum extent possible. There's, I think, we had a couple roadway crossings, a pedestrian crossing and there's some utilities and I guess sidewalk stuff, sidewalk improvements along 28th. So again, yeah, the idea is to minimize impacts. We're working with the engineering staff to do that. There may be some cleaning up of the ditch that needs to happen, we're working out those details. You are correct, the idea is to leave the.
Commissioner, I also want to remind the commission that that's not a that's not, that seems like a question that's related to the future master plan amendment criteria of approval as opposed to the Plan Amendment and Zone Change criteria of approval. So I want to, I want to stay focused on the criteria of approval for the present application because the Planning Commission will hear the master plan amendment and be able to make a separate decision on that based on those criteria of approval. You're not making a decision on both the master plan modification and the Plan Amendment and Zone Change all at one time. They are sequential and have different criteria of approval. So the other thing I would ask, just for helping staff to respond appropriately to questions is if you're asking a question that could go to both and you have the criteria or the metro plan policy or cop plan policy or statewide planning rule in mind that you're asking about that's relevant to tonight's criteria, if the commission could help staff by pointing out what it is, what criteria you're speaking to, if it's one of those things that would also be related to a future master plan, that would be helpful, thanks.
Thank you Christina. Just to verify, Mike, was there anything else you want to ask at the moment?
Thank you Chair, no.
Okay. Anybody else have questions at the moment for the applicant before we move forward with response and rebuttal? And, and public questions? Hearing none, I'm now going to call testimony from the public. Thank you AKS Engineering for the presentation.
Thank you.
So, do we have anyone in person right now Brenda?
We don't have anyone in person. We have three that's on the call.
Okay, and that's online and we have zero on the phone?
Correct.
Okay, thank you Brenda. So for people online, Brenda, can you call out somebody from comments please? Thank you.
So our first responder is Brett Yancy from the Springfield School District. Bert, you're up.
Brett Yancy, I'm the Chief decisions officer for Springfield School District. My address is 2644 Cumberland Drive, Eugene, Oregon. And I am commenting on the Markola Meadows application. Currently going through a process and upper owner within the site. School district has maintained interest in this property several years and we believe that this will serve the community very well by having a school in this development, a future school will likely be met current projections. And that is the purpose of our interest in the property and I just wanted to simply state our we appreciate your time and the effort that you're putting into this.
Thank you Brett. I didn't want to interrupt, but I want to verify with Brenda. I was getting a little bit of cut out at times.
Yeah, we did as well, I think it was his connection.
Okay, is it going to be good enough for the record or is there something we should do?
I think it's, I think it's fine.
Okay.
If he wants to state the, if he's in favor or against, that would be better.
Chris is in favor of the.
Thank you again Brett. Okay Brenda, do we have another?
Sorry, I was muted. Dan Hill is in, is next.
Yes, hello, my name's Daniel Hill, I'm with Arbor South Architecture. My address is 863 Mint Meadow in Springfield. As I mentioned, I'm the project architect for the Northwood Christian Church Project, also a member of Northwood Christian Church. And here just to give our support to this project, we're excited about the building that we're designing for Northwood. Northwood is a really viable entity in the city of Springfield with a lot of outreach ministries and this is just a wonderful site for us to call our future home and just be a great community asset to not only the Hayden Bridge area, but all of Springfield. So that is, what I'd like to say is that we're just in great support of this project and the Markola Meadows modifications.
Thank you.
Next up is Barry Lind.
Yes, sitting beside Dan here, just grateful for the work that you all are doing. I'm pastor at Northwood Christian Church. We've been across from Page Elementary for 58 years. We have a great deal of passion and commitment to being a part of the Springfield community. We've enjoyed a good relationship with the Springfield School District, trying to partner with them in many ways to support our students, plus many other organizations that really seek to strengthen and improve the Springfield community. We have outgrown our space. We've built several times onsite and it's become landlocked and we'd been looking for property for years but always were hoping and praying we could stay in Springfield. When eight acres came open on Markola Meadows, we were so thrilled as it's going to give us a new home and an opportunity for us to continue to grow. We currently have well over 700 people that call Northwood home and we're just excited about what's before us and the opportunity to continue to partner with so many wonderful organizations in the Springfield School District in the days that are before us. So thank you, and I didn't say my address, Barry Lind, 753 Old Orchard Lane, Springfield, Oregon.
Thank you both. And Brenda, do we have anybody else?
There is no one else. We heard that there might be someone wandering around City Hall trying to find the meeting. If she comes in, then we'll make an exception and let her talk.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Brenda. So now we have a staff response to testimony from Senior Planner Andy Lembert.
Thank you Mr. Chairman. Throughout the entire application process, I have fielded inquiries from members of the public, people in the neighborhood, people living nearby. Nothing has been negative and I haven't received any written comments, as you've seen. There has not been any testimony submitted in either neutral or opposition to this application. Staff, I think, went over and above in notifying people of the initial public hearing for, it was originally for September 9th and then the postponed public hearing for this evening. Everyone that had ever contacted me for questions about Markola Meadows and what was going on, even related just to the subdivision and other work, I recontacted everyone. Amazingly spoke to all but one person in person to let them know about the public hearing. And so I'm hoping that they may be out there in the audience or watching this, this presentation. But we haven't had any expressions of opposition to this. So in short, the recommendations before you are for support, a recommendation of support to the City Council. There is a condition attached to the zone change and that is subsequent to the zoning, should it go through and be approved by the City Council. The applicant would need to come back with a master plan modification to bring the master plan into compliance with the changed zoning fabric for the property. So that's consistent with what we've talked about, they're kind of, they're tightly linked and certainly the Planning Commission will have a second opportunity to review the proposed modifications to the master plan and all the inherent details with that when that comes back, likely within just a couple of months.
Thank you Andy, and now we have opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant.
Thank you Chris Goodell, again, with the applicant. We appreciate the support of the members of the church in the school district. It's really great to hear and we're happy, excited to be working with them on this project. So I don't have any rebuttal, just wanted to thank everybody for their time here this evening.
Thank you again. And now we have time for possible questions to applicant, staff, or persons who have testified. Commissioners may turn their cameras on to indicate if they desire to speak. You may also no, I'm not going to do roll call. So does anybody want to ask questions at this time? Commissioner McGinley?
Thank you, this is my last question. So Section 3.3-1005A of the Springfield Development Code states that the nodal development overlay district supports pedestrian-friendly mixed-use development. My question is, are we foregoing an opportunity to build a walkable mixed-use neighborhood with commercial and economic opportunity? Additionally, I wonder about the precedent this could set and whether this undermines other nodal development planning and transportation goals.
We have our staff transportation engineer in attendance who can maybe answer part of that question.
I'm also happy to share some information if there's Michael.
Hello, this is Michael Liebler, City Springfield Transportation Planning Engineer. Sophie, sorry, Commissioner. Yes, the nodal development area and removal of that does have some transportation planning elements to consider. The, most of the street network and pedestrian connectivity in the northern area, plus the collector and some of the street network going through the apartments are definitely preserved with the modification. With the zoning removal, the nodal overlay essentially established a requirement for additional pedestrian connections and street connectivity within what is existing, the commercial area, that will not go in as planned for the previous master plan. But the modifications within the master plan are still preserving some of the pedestrian connections through the site. What this does impact in terms of the overall transportation system is we have planned for frequent transit network routes to touch the site. It is not as intense of a site or as a built environment for transit-oriented development, which is an effect of lifting the nodal development area. Outside of that, the transportation impacts with this zoning are mostly a downzoning, so a de-intensification of vehicle trips.
I also, I also just wanted to mention real quick that the nodal overlay district was adopted under the former trans plan and was not, which was before the Springfield 2035 TSP. And the Springfield 2035 TSP, it's outlined in the staff report, does not contain any policies that require the retention of nodal development areas, as the Planning Commission is pretty familiar with as we went through the recent project. It contains sort of overall policies around the transportation network that were recently implemented into specific development standards for all types of development. And so I think you, I think you can see through the findings of the staff report that over time connectivity policies have shifted, maybe you could probably, you could say out of a nodal development area focus and into a broader connectivity throughout Springfield focus. And with higher priority being placed on multi-use mixed-modal areas, which are a specific type of area defined in the current transportation planning rule, which is not the same thing as one of the city's nodal development areas. And this particular property has never qualified as a multi-use mixed-modal area under the transportation planning rule.
Thank you both for your thorough answers.
Other questions from commissioners? Hearing none, would the commission like to close the public hearing and/or public record or continue the hearing slash hold the record open to another date?
I mean, if we close the hearing and the record.
Okay.
We have a motion to close the hearing and the record from Commissioner Gill and a second from Commissioner Bergen. All those in favor, I'll call roll call. Commissioner Sherwood? Aye. Commissioner Gill?
Aye.
Commissioner Vose? If he responded, Commissioner Vose, he may have been.
The mic wouldn't come on, aye.
All right, Commissioner Landon?
Aye.
Commissioner Bergen?
Aye.
Commissioner Coyle?
Aye.
Commissioner McGinley?
Aye.
That's unanimous in favor of closing the public hearing and record? So those are now closed. Do we have any discussion of the application?
Yes, I've got a few points. I'd also like to go ahead and say that if our city attorney wishes to weigh in on whether any of these are pertinent, if you could wait until after I get these out, then you can go through them one by one. First of all, I have a pretty good concern about the loss of the open channel storm drain system, which went through the prior master plan. We, it was a really impressive design with low bank trees and wetlands, access for pedestrians, et cetera. Losing that and just retaining the Pierce Ditch, to me, will result in more pollution, heat sink and concentration of outflows. I also have concern about the loss, apparent loss of the impressive streetscape along Markola, which included a lot of entry lane trees, entry lane for the people along the south side and an impressive viewscape from across Markola into the property that I think will be lost under this zoning. And I think that that is definitely pertinent. I agree with Commissioner McGinley in that the, losing the nodal design and the the mixed-use commercial, I think, is not necessarily a good thing. The idea of living and working in an area would turn that area into a very successful residential neighborhood business hub, kind of like Oakway Center. Kind of like Oakway Center or Crescent Village, which I think would be a greater shot in the arm to the entire area. From 5th to 42nd on the north side of 126. And that's an area that in my opinion really needs investment. I do understand that commercial real estate is under. Water right now, but we can expect this to change in the future. And that's what the phasing of this property was all about. Again, I agree with Commissioner McGinley that I can understand that a revision might be called for in this. But the redesign to my opinion, in my opinion, we've lost too much of what I thought was a really elegant. Land use plan for a large site, 82 acres of which we don't have a lot of in Springfield. And we lose too much in this in this zoning change and redesign. And we really haven't added anything of value to the existing approved design. I also agree with Commissioner Vos that I believe that market use, market. Rate housing. For the entire site is unfortunate and. I feel that if we could have added some sort of low income housing, if that applicant could have added some low income housing. To the property that that would be an incentive to approve. But as it as it sits right now for those reasons, some of which may be germane to the discussion and some of which may not be. Also, yeah, the loss of the tax base, now I'll say just at least in regard to. The loss of the businesses that are in there, the smaller businesses, I think that we would lose significant tax base for the. For the city of Springfield in there and I will include the school on that, but I won't. Of course, will not discuss the church under advice of council, so that's my comments, thank you.
Kristina, I believe you're muted.
Sorry, I just wanted to respond that a metro plan amendment and zone change does not. Approve any particular use of the property, so it does not approve market rate versus multifamily versus low income housing. It allows the zoning which is implemented by all types of different uses that can be approved in later applications. Like the intended master plan modification, but also, you know, in other context, site plan approval or subdivision approval, so. The class of uses allowed under the zoning is relevant, but a preference for individual uses such as market rate type. Units versus affordable housing is not relevant because both are permitted under the proposed zone. Also, this application makes no alterations and has no effect on the pierce ditch directly. It doesn't approve any development in that area, it just sets the zoning. And metro plan designation and category, so I just wanted to clarify those two items. Certainly issues around nodal development area and plan policies around commercial development are very relevant, so.
Commissioner Gill?
Thanks, first, thanks to everybody for all the work on this. It was, it was a lot of work and I appreciate it. I too, so. I am paying attention to housing which was brought up in the application and in the staff report. One of the benefits of of this change is that it has potential to increase housing. And the nodal overlay is about density, so there is some of that housing density. That's addressed by shifting the other zoning areas. But it feels like the nodal. Is also to get. Specific use in there, so it's really hard when we get an application that talks about the plan. But we really don't get to review the plan. In the decision for the zone change and the and the removal of the overlay, so keeping that separated. It feels, it reads to me like we are at least getting the housing density from it. I too have concerns about losing that mixed use commercial. I think there's a lot of what is in all of the plans. For Springfield about walkability and livability and. Multi types of transportation to get to resources in the community. I think also mixed use commercial leads to. Better opportunity for all people to have access to resources that commercial can bring to them to neighborhoods. And I think that that is an important thing that appears in our plans, so. More discussion around that I think would be valuable for me to come to a decision. Another point I wanted to bring up which. Might fall under the master plan. Review, but. But because goal five is discussed, has to be addressed in this, I think any kind of zoning this would have to be addressed, but. The potential for archaeological. Material to be at this site is pretty big based on its proximity to the river. So just to bring up in future planning or for the property owners and the developers. Who are doing work out there, keep your eye out, there are state laws regarding archaeology, so I would super recommend. An inadvertent discovery plan to be at hand to keep your project moving forward. I did feel like some, well, it's irrelevant, those are my key points, thanks.
So. My thing that I'd like to add to the conversation of the plan versus or the the master plan versus the. Zoning and the Springfield plan is that. We're gonna see another plan like Christina said, and I think what needs to be under consideration is what can occur. In this zoning, I mean, we know the types of thing that they're looking at, but ultimately what I'm seeing is a. Change from commercial to more residential. And so. Regardless of what type of housing ultimately ends up there. What this says to me is it says to me that more housing can be there. And in my mind, more housing is a good thing. We've been dealing for a long time with the housing shortage and. The issues around jobs are much more cyclical. From my perspective and we have seen this. Site see multiple different master plan changes. All the way in, if I remember right, it was around 2008 when when this was first going forward from last time we looked at a master plan change. And we were looking at a lot more business going in here and then it turned out that the types of businesses that it was trying to attract. Weren't attracted to the economy shifts, changes and. What I thought about with this is it had some big box stores coming in, the economy downturned. We'd be looking at empty, empty buildings, we've got an empty. Safeway out in the Thurston area, it's just been sitting there. And you know, you have too many, I mean, you got Albertson's down the street there, I mean, you start putting in too many stores and you're not going to fill them. And we know that we need more housing, so I understand that there's a delicate balance, but from my perspective and from what I'm hearing from the applicant. I'm in agreement that there's a housing need and. Expanding the amount of medium density residential to me. Seems like a logical response to that regardless of what the master plan shows. So. The other thing is it's been expressed that there's a need for for schools. School district is in support of this and we see that the school district. Wants more space and I think that that's something that should be promoted by the city and the community. So I know it's a change and I know that we looked a lot at another master plan and we really liked the idea of that master plan when it came forward, but. I think ultimately. What we're looking at is whether or not this meets criteria of approval and it does. In my mind and I welcome more housing in the community. And ultimately, we're not reviewing a specific master plan at the moment, we're looking at the zoning change, so. That's what I have to add at the moment. Any other commissioners?
Chair, I would like to add.
Commissioner Bergen?
Thank you so much, I've kind of been. Holding off a little bit because as I mentioned in the beginning, I am a residential Realtor, so I have a little bit. More of a ear to the ground as to what's happening and I couldn't echo what Chair Sherwood said any louder possible. We have to look at what the highest and best uses for this current property. As a longtime resident of Springfield. I have seen this property be vacant for a very long time, my life, my entire life, basically. Irrelevant though. Chair Sherwood is completely correct and you know, we've, we've talked about the housing shortage and. How high of importance that is to the city of Springfield to provide adequate housing or housing in general. Especially with what recently happened and I know this, this can't likely take place. Christina, you can correct me if I'm wrong in the decision, but with a lot of our displaced community members, we are going to have from the recent fires, we're going to have even more people. Wanting to move in to the cities and we don't have the space for them. So I think it's really important for us to look at the property as it is and see if it is the highest and best use of what's being proposed. You know, there's been conversation about small businesses potentially not being able to move into this space. Anymore if the zone change was to happen, we have plenty of opportunity for small business or large businesses in Springfield, having. The urban growth boundary just expanded north of Gateway, having a zone change recently. Over by the hospital, we have ample opportunity there as well as over in Glenwood. So looking at this piece of property that is in front of us this evening. That we have to look at the criteria of approval and I also agree that it meets. The needs of the criteria of approval and it seems like it fits in with the community around it. And that is what I have to say.
Other commissioners? Okay, so. I've heard some testimony with some critiques and I've heard testimony with support. We've heard from, I believe, five of the seven commissioners. And if nobody else has anything to add, I would be inclined to say that it's. Getting toward time to. Make a motion, but knowing that. Not everyone spoke and there has been, there have been some critical comments, I want to get an idea of which direction. We would best make that motion. I mean, I'm inclined to support this. This application, it sounds like Commissioner Bergen is inclined to support this application. So I entertain a motion in either direction though. Or if anybody's inclined to want to add findings, I think is also an opportunity for that. Okay, I see, saw a message, a comment from Commissioner Landon, so Commissioner Landon, would you like to make that motion?
Do we have text that would, that's particular to this that we that we often have?
I can copy paste that into the.
Thank you, Christina.
That would help, thank you, just because I don't want to muff it up.
Sorry, I sent that accidentally to just Sandy, I will send it again to everyone.
Commissioner. I'm having one of those senior moments, is this an appropriate time to proceed?
Yes, thank you, Andy.
Okay, we'd like to move to adopt the planning commission orders in the agenda packet as attachments six and seven to forward. A recommendation to the city council to approve both applications.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt the planning commission orders in the agenda pack as attachment six and seven to forward a recommendation to the city council to approve both applications by Commissioner Landon. And a second from Commissioner Bergen, I'll call roll call for those in favor. Commissioner Sherwood, aye, Commissioner Gill?
Aye.
Commissioner Vos?
Aye.
Commissioner Landon?
Aye.
Commissioner Bergen?
Aye.
Commissioner Coeala?
No.
Commissioner McGinley?
No.
Okay, we have. In favor, majority. Which is five to two. So I believe we are. Sending this to the city council with the recommendation of approval. So I believe that concludes our meeting regarding this application, I just want to say thank you to everyone involved, thank you to staff. And thank you to AKS for the presentation and putting more work into developing this property. And I'm looking forward to. The master plan coming forward for us to review at that time. Do we have any reports of city council meetings? Yeah, Tim.
Oh. Let Mike go ahead because I was going to cover something that wasn't my.
Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, I attended the city council meeting on, let's see, nine.
Luckily, nine fourteen, Mike.
Nine fourteen, thank you, thank you very much, I'm looking for it in my notes, discussion was the mayoral vacancy. And how to move forward on that, no actual decision was made. They're going to revisit it again on the 28th and firm up what their, what their reaction is going to be. On how to move forward to port appoint a new mayor. Also discussed distribution of CARES Act funds, 1.8 million dollars of which 1.15 is still available. So some discussion on business loans and grants. It has to be spent in 2020, so sounds like there's quite a bit of money that is going to be shared in the community, so that's great. The also discussed. Increase in the Santa PAC fees for biomedical waste, which was. Interesting in that it involved the discussion of homeless camps and cleaning those up and. And how expensive that would be to people who are volunteers in doing that. But that was pretty much the discussion on that and. And some business on the council, everyone.
the horrible fire increases. The fire chief discussed the programs that were in effect, and the police chief did a really, really interesting discussion on the evacuations and how the Police Department for City of Springfield stepped up to the plate to help a lot of people get out of the areas. So really good discussion on that, and that was pretty much nine-fourteens meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Do we have any other City Council reports? Hearing none, we have business from members of the planning commission. I believe Tim wanted to add there.
No, the only reason I spoke is that I wasn't sure whether Mike was going to cover the process on the mayoral decision, and if he wasn't, I could have, because I plugged it in just for personal interest. But since he's covered it then, I have nothing further.
Well, thank you, Tim. Do we have any business from members of the planning commission?
Yes, this is Sophie. I wanted to let everybody know that the Oregon chapter of the American Planning Association, or OAPA for short, is having their annual conference virtually in October. It'll be from October fourteenth to sixteenth. This year's theme is growing together virtually, and the conference will explore issues such as how can we help communities rebound after COVID-19, or does the role of planners in furthering racial equity, and what are early lessons from 2020's traumatic wildfire season?
Thank you, Sophie. Question on that, is that available to anyone virtually, and is there a cost?
Yes, it's available to anyone. There is a cost. The cost differentiates for members and non-members of the chapter. There are also sponsorship opportunities, and this will be a joint conference with the Washington chapter of the APA as well. And full disclosure, I'll be on a panel, but will not be compensated for such, so.
That's great. Thank you, Sophie. Is there business from other members? Hearing none, do we have business from Development Public Works Department?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Sandy Delton. I'm the Comprehensive Planning Manager. I'm going to try to use Brenda's mic instead, I guess. All right, we're having echo here. So first of all, any of the planning commissioners can attend. We have a budget to support your training if you choose to go to the OAPA conference, so please contact Brenda if that's something you're interested in. Secondly, is I did send out a memo on the rulemaking that DLCD, the Department of Land, Conservation and Development, is undertaking. They are holding public hearings on the middle housing rules and also the housing production strategy. So that public hearing is this Friday. The Governance Committee met last week, and one of the city councilors on that Governance Committee will testify. And both Mark Russ, Senior Planner, and I have submitted written comments on the rulemaking. Third, I want to share with you that we are going to start a new platform in an effort to be more accessible to the public. It's called People Speak, and we're going to be calling it Springfield, Oregon Speaks as our name. And so that will allow us to have better interaction with the public and have what is called an asynchronous meeting, so we can have information up ahead of time and have comments come, and then from the public through that portal, which will be embedded in our website. And the commissioners will be able to see those comments as they come in. We'll also be able to have a staff presentation done ahead of time, so that will help familiarize the public with the application, although because of our code, we will also then have that staff presentation during the actual live meeting. So it's possible that Mark Russ will be able to be the first one to use that for our upcoming work session. That's a pretty simple meeting, there's no real public hearing, there's no public comment in a work session on the code update. So if we can get it together, we'll be launching it for that as kind of a easy way for you to start to get familiar with this new platform that we're pretty excited about. Any questions on any of those items? Brenda's reminding me that we do also have some vacancies on the planning commission coming up. So we are doing a batch recruitment this year for all of our commissions, committees, and boards. So we're recruiting all at the same time for any of the vacancies that are available. So Commissioner Vos's term is up, and unfortunately, he is not eligible to reapply. And then Commissioner Sherwood's term is up. So we do have some vacancies, at least one, that will need to be filled from someone not on the commission currently. So please help us get the word out, and those applications are due in mid-October. I'm forgetting the date right now. Okay, back, I'm finished. If you had a question, Commissioner Gill, did you have a question?
Oh, I just wanted to say thank you for continuing to look into good access for the public for these meetings. I know it's a lot of work to learn new things, but the possibilities for public engagement with the right systems is really, really cool. So I appreciate that effort from staff and everybody, like, learning a new thing again.
I have a question in regard to the commission vacancies. If Commissioner Vos, I believe, is not absent until, is it June of next year, is that correct?
No, his term actually finished this past June, if it was June, and because we were doing the batch recruitment, it was decided he would just continue on instead of trying to fill his term mid-process.
So his term expires now, when?
The normal amount that he would have gotten.
So his term expires when?
Well, it actually technically expired, and then it got extended.
It was extended until when, then?
Till the end of this calendar year.
To the end of this calendar year. And if someone were to want to apply between October and December, they would not be considered?
Assuming that they get enough applicants to fill the position by that mid-October date, I don't think that there would be a consideration of other people after that.
So they'll close, they'll close applications even though the term is not up?
Well, the new person would not take the seat until January.
Yeah, I understand that. Okay, thank you.
Was that all from staff?
That's all I have. There are other staff that at least were on the meeting. I don't know if any of them want to say anything. If so, they should make an appearance now.
I have nothing to add. This is Jim from Current Development, but thank you, Sandy.
All right, well, thank you, everyone. I just want to point out, I saw that Sophie sent the link there in chat to anybody that wants that link. It's there. And I just want to say thanks to everyone. I hope you're safe and everybody's doing okay after the fires, and have a great week or couple weeks until we meet again. We're adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Good night.
Thanks, everyone. Take care.